Shall we wait for the screen to pop up? There we go. All right. Good evening and welcome to the November 8, 2024, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body; that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land-use planning projects, such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with these projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate, or BMR, housing agreements, associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with these projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with those projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public. There will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as general public comment. With that, I will call role for planning commissioners. Commissioner Beruzzi. Here. Commissioner Doe. Present. Vice Chair Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Farrak.
Here.
Commissioner Sillen.
Here.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Present.
I am Chair Schindler, and I am present. So we have seven commissioners here in chambers, which is a quorum. Mr. Prada, are there any -- we are now into the staff reports -- sorry, the reports and announcement component of our agenda. Do we have any staff reports or announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schindler and members of the planning commission. So two reports or announcements for the commission. So tomorrow evening, the council at its meeting has two items that I wanted to highlight for the commission that may be of interest. So the first one is a consideration of a resolution declaring the downtown parking plazas 1, 2, and 3 exempt from the Surplus Land Act, which would then -- and then provide feedback and authorize staff to release a request for qualifications, or RFQ, as it's commonly called, for potential affordable housing developments on parking plazas 1, 2, and 3. So that would be in support of implementation of the city's housing element. So the council will be considering that item tomorrow evening. They'll also be considering a request for funding from the city's BMR fund for the 100% affordable housing project at 320 Sheridan Drive. It's a partnership between a affordable housing developer and the Ravenswood City School District for 88 units. And so there's a request out there for $600,000 that the council will be considering tomorrow evening as well. And that concludes my reports and announcements, but happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions about that? Commissioner Farrak.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Through the chair, if I can ask a question of staff. Mr. Prada, the last item, the Sheridan project, is that going to be coming to the planning commission?
Yes, it will. Staff's currently evaluating the project plans, entitlements, and preparing or conducting the environmental review. So once those -- once the environmental review is complete, and the plans are ready, and the entitlements, we'll bring that forward to the planning commission. The planning commission would be the final decision-making body unless the application's appealed to the council.
Thank you. Do other commissioners have any questions about the announcements? Do commissioners have any other announcements or reports of their own? Okay. Seeing that, I do have a brief report out that I would like to share with the commission. I had the opportunity to attend a one-hour walking tour in Palo Alto yesterday, Sunday, November 17. The walking tour included a discussion with three local architects and focused on the history and architecture of five tall residential buildings in the University Avenue downtown area. I found that the history of each of the buildings very interesting. Each was built between the late '20s and 1965. For each building, the architects present discussed the height, the number of units, the dwelling units per acre represented, all of which helped illustrate the different versions of the look and feel of higher-density residences. The walk was sponsored by Palo Alto Forward. And if commissioners, or staff, or interested members of the public would like to learn more or get a summary of the tour highlights, these are publicly available, or I was told they would be made publicly available, and could be sought by sending an email to info@paloaltoforward.com. During the walk, I also received a positive comment, in fact, from an organizer, complimenting Menlo Park's success with the housing element, and acknowledging, in their words, "the city's regional leadership on housing issues." And so I just wanted to pass along that compliment to staff and the commission, and my notes of appreciation for all of that work that was recognized by the person that I spoke with yesterday. So thank you. Okay. Moving past our announcements component of the agenda, we will now move into item D, public comment, that portion of our agenda. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. You're not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our specific agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item on the agenda. So to give instructions on how to participate and to kick off our public comment session, I'm going to turn to Mr. Hochleitner, our clerk for this evening, to explain how you can participate and start the comment period.
Thank you. During the public comment period, members of the public have an opportunity to share their comments or questions remotely by clicking the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce and activate your microphone. For those calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we will make sure each person gets a chance to speak. For those participating in person, please fill out a speaker card located in the back of the room and hand it to me. I don't see any hands raised, and the only speaker cards I have are for agenda items.
Okay. As we have no requests to speak during our general public comment period, I will go ahead and close item D of our agenda, the public comment, and move forward into our next element, which is the consent calendar, item E. There are two items inside of our consent calendar for this evening. We have -- the first one is approval for the planning commission meeting minutes from October 28, 2024, and the second item is planning commission meeting minutes from November 4, 2024. Do commissioners want to pull either of the items from the consent calendar? Okay. Given that we will leave both items in the consent calendar, then, Mr. Hochleitner, can we please call for public comment on the consent calendar?
As a reminder, if you are joining us online, please click the hand icon if you wish to provide a comment during this period. If you are in the chambers, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. And at the moment, I don't see any hands raised and no comment cards.
Okay. Without any requests to speak on the consent calendar, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for a motion. Commissioner Farrak.
I move to accept the consent calendar.
We have a first and a second from Commissioner Silverstein. I will go ahead and vote on the consent calendar, or call the vote on the consent calendar. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Aye.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak. Sorry, Commissioner -- Vice Chair Eric. Wow.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Aye.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes, so that is seven in favor. No absences, abstentions, or noes. So we will -- the consent calendar is approved. We will now move into the next section of our agenda, the public hearing component. There are three items in our public hearing this evening. The first one is F1. This is agenda item regarding the use permit at 801 Hermosa Way. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and accessory structures, and construct a new, two-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the RE, or Residential Estate Zoning District. The proposal also includes a detached accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. The project also includes one development-related heritage tree removal, which was reviewed and conditionally approved by the city arborist. Mr. Hochleitner, I believe, are there any updates to the staff report?
Good evening from the other desk.
You've moved.
We do have a few updates to the staff report since it was printed. We received three letters from the community, which you got a copy of via email, and then also a printed copy today. We also do have a number of additional conditions that we would like to propose for the conditions of approval, and I can put those up on the screen so you can review them. These are in response to a number of the neighbor inquiries regarding the protection of the trees around the site and some utility trenching. So I'm going to put those up for you to review just in one second.
And while my colleague is pulling that up, just for members of the community who may be interested in those comment layers that were received after publication of the staff report, there are copies available on the table at the back of the room. Thanks.
So I'm going to read these so they can go in the record. Additional project-specific condition 2B, concurrent with the submittal of a complete building application, the project arborist shall submit an addendum to the project arborist report to include specific protection measures for -- to protect coast live oak trees number 23 and 24 during fence removal, subject to review and approval of the city arborist and the planning division. Project-specific condition 2C, concurrent with the submittal of a complete building permit application, the project arborist shall review and evaluate the civil plan sheets to ensure all utility work, including trenching, would be outside of the tree's designated tree protection zone from heritage trees, or identify measures to reduce any potential impact to heritage trees on the project site or adjacent sites. The project arborist shall submit an addendum to the project arborist report with this evaluation, and if applicable, additional tree protection measures, subject to review and approval of the city arborist and planning division. Project-specific condition 2D, during the project construction, the project arborist shall conduct monthly monitoring of the project site and submit a monthly monitoring report to the city arborist for review and approval. Project-specific conditions B and C are specific to protecting the heritage trees on the site, and then project-specific condition 2D, while already included in the arborist report, we -- because we've gotten so much interest in the trees on this site, is included as an additional day lighting, just a reminder that they need to do this monitoring as part of their conditions of approval. And on that note, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. I think it will be helpful to leave that visible as we proceed with the discussion. Is the applicant present and desiring to speak?
Yes, the applicant is present. Kathleen Liston is here, and she will also have a presentation that I will put up on the screen for you as well.
Okay. Let's go ahead with that presentation, and then, following the presentations, we'll move into clarifying questions, and then, following clarifying questions, we will do public comment.
So that screen's not going to work, but if you look to the side, you'll be able to follow along.
Sorry. I'll try to look at both of you and look at the presentations and then. Can you hear me?
Yes. And we do have the screens in front of us as well, so if we are not making eye contact with you, it's because we are looking at your presentation on our screens.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm Kathleen Liston, and my husband Alex is here with me. You can probably go to the second slide. We have lived in Menlo Park for 24 years. We currently live in Sharon Heights and built our home 15 years ago. We built that home around three heritage trees, which are alive and doing wonderfully today. In fact, the redwood tree is probably like 80 feet tall, and it sits -- I look at it every day. It's like 10 feet from my house, my office. So we wanted to move a little closer to town, and we love Hermosa Way, and I can't read any of the text, obviously, that I wrote, so I'm going to have to do this all from memory. And so we came upon this property, and it was kind of our dream to live on Hermosa, and we found this property. It has a lot of trees on it. There's, I think I said there's 16 protected trees, eight of which are directly adjacent on the neighboring property. I'm very -- I understand the neighbors from early on expressed a lot of concern about those trees, and so a lot of my -- you can see from the overhead shot that there's trees on all sides of this property. And so I did a lot of analysis using the tree protection zones and went through like 20 different options, trying to figure out, it was kind of like a puzzle, moving the house north, south, east, west. Ultimately, due to the way the two trees that are in the front, with driveway access, I couldn't keep both of those trees without impacting -- no matter which way I moved the house, we were going to impact trees. And so we proposed the removal of the Deodore cedar in the front, and ultimately, the proposal that -- what else did I -- and so there were some other, just in terms of the site characteristics, in addition to the trees, there's a well on the property, which we want to keep and maintain, and so that limits some of the development on that side of the property. And there's really one nice tree in the backyard, which is an oak tree, and that's the one that we want to be able to look at and enjoy. And then there is -- all of the utilities are at the front northeast part of the site. So had we kept the Deodore cedar, any of the utility trenching would have gone through that tree, but the final solution kind of optimizes having the trenching for utilities directly to the corner of the garage and preventing that to go within any of the footprint of some of the TPZ for the redwood trees that are on the neighboring property. So we can go to the next slide. So just as an overview, I did a lot of these diagrams that show the impact of each of the options that I looked at in terms of additional impact to the trees and the redwood zone, either through new development of a structure, trenching, hardscape, relative to the existing house. And so I went through a number of options, and not only looked at it in terms of the trees, but looked at it in terms of our wish list, which is, you know, a lot of indoor-outdoor space. We wanted a pool. We have a pool. We have a sport court. We have -- we wanted an ADU, and we wanted covered -- a covered area for us to have barbecue and a fireplace, and a number of other items that were important to us. So in that design process, this just gives a summary of how I looked at all of these examples, and ultimately came up with the proposal that we have today. This included meeting with the neighbors, who expressed the concern, not only with the trees, but privacy and views. There's these pittusporum that are existing, and I'll get into that, that were basically hiding their view of this property, that are quite old, and so they had concern if I removed those, that that privacy would go away. So you'll see in a few seconds how I address that. You can go to the next slide. So overview, I think one of their primary concerns, this is the neighbor to the east with respect to the location of the ADU. I originally proposed putting it as close to the fence as I'm allowed, which would have been four feet and four feet, and that would have both impacted -- there's two very small oak trees, as well as the ability to have screening that was important to them. So I agreed that although I wanted to hide their garage, that is also is right three feet up against the fence, and that's why I put the ADU there, because I didn't want to look at that. I ultimately moved the ADU, so it's almost nine feet from the property line, as well as there's an accessory structure that's attached to the ADU, is where we're going to have a covered porch, and I moved that, and it's now 12 feet. So it's well over the limit in terms of how close we could have put that structure, but that allows us to plant new hedges there that could provide additional privacy and address that concern. And so I also, in terms of the overview, the other concerns that I'll discuss was that the impacts to their redwood trees, the impacts of the -- any of the protected trees, both on and off the property, as well as the massing of the house. I'm very sensitive to that in terms of any street scape, and I -- although that's a personal opinion, I would like to think that we considered that, and that the house is not this -- is not right up against a setback in this monstrosity that you're going to see. I'm sensitive with the solution that we made. You can go to the next slide. And I apologize, I can't see the text I have, so I'm jumping all over the place. So I mentioned this ADU, so the ADU is put -- that they have a driveway that runs along that side of the property, so I thought putting the ADU there doesn't impact their house, kind of is shielded from that portion of the property, but they showed me how, when they walk to their garage from their house, that they can see that area. So this is the part of the property that I addressed. You can go to the next slide. And so you can see the view from my property is currently there's a wire fence there, and so I can see their structure, and there's like a little structure on my property that would be demolished. And so the plan, that's where the new ADU is going to go, and we're going to put in a seven-foot-high. I'm going to pay for the cost of a seven-foot-high fence, solid wood fence there. So as I mentioned before, I moved the ADU further to allow for more screening, as well as this also helps with any utilities that have to run, that they can run outside of the footprint of those trees. You can go to the next slide. And so I also have a rendering here showing that with the seven-foot-high fence, and even if you -- those are just showing plants that would be at nine feet, that you'll -- the structure's only eight feet, you know, nine feet tall, the accessory porch, so there's not much visibility. It may not be day one, but I'm proposing to plant 24- or 36-inch pittusporum, and so I was trying to address their concern, and I'm sensitive to that. But the ADU, you'll see some part of it, you'll see the roof, but there's room there now to plant screens. They also can plant screening on their side of the property. I know there are driveway ones there, and they took care of these pittusporum, but they really are not the most attractive trees, and they're not native, and not something that I care for. But the only thing that I did not address, which was a concern, was any noise that we might make, and, you know, short of maybe could put a fountain in or something, but that is my backyard, and I'm not sure, you know, the fence and the trees might block some of it, but that's a concern that I did not address entirely, and I'm not sure that I'm required to do so, but I'm sensitive to that. But that's the only thing that we did not address. So then with regards to the protection of the redwood trees and the main house, so I moved the house as far to the west because of these large trees, and so it's even -- it's almost 20, 22 feet from the -- I think that's what I -- no, it's much further from that property line than the current house is today, and that's going to give additional footprint for these redwood trees to thrive and grow. I'm giving -- so the current house sits much closer to those redwood trees than what I am proposing. With regard to the street scape, these are just renderings that I've done in terms of the massing. I forgot to mention that I'm a licensed architect and a contractor. So I like to use different materials, stone and dark cedar, and mix up forms, modern and some traditional, and kind of break up the massing. And so with respect to how you'll see the house, it's stepped back from the street in different forms, and so it's not sitting right there right. It's, I think, the closest is the garage, which is 22 feet, but then the main part of the house sits further back. And these are -- this is one of my last homes that I designed and built, that is kind of inspiration for the same style, which is one of my favorite homes, and so -- and sad to let, you know, have someone move into it that was a client. They love it. So it's a mix of materials, stone, stained cedar siding, and dark aluminum windows. With regards to the replacement trees that I'm required to replace and account for this one Deodore cedar that we're removing, I'm proposing an oak tree in the front that will also serve as kind of a buffer to a parked -- a parking space. I like wax, Pacific wax myrtle. It's a very dense hedge that's native, and it -- when you get it, it's kind of instant hedge, so I'll use a mix of that. I also wanted some olive trees in the front, and we're using different native landscaping, so I think it'll be in character with kind of both what, you know, low drought native landscaping throughout. And this just shows some of the hedging that is being proposed as a -- to, again, provide that privacy in that one location that's of a concern to the neighbor. So just in summary, I did meet with the neighbors. I did -- a lot of this was consulted with the arborist in terms of what he felt was the best measures that we could take. We're working with the structural engineer right now to address, and the civil engineer to address kind of the foundation relative to the trees that were impacting on the western side, and so those comments are being incorporated in terms of how we do that foundation, so that we can mitigate any impact to those trees. But I did move the ADU over. Not only did I move the ADU over, but there was a pool equipment. I was going to put it there, and I moved that to the other side, which is going to cost more money to trench, but it allows for that screening and address one of their concerns that they had. And then, as I mentioned, impact to the redwood trees, I'm sensitive to it, and so the arborist has written very detailed notes on what we're supposed to do, and those have been incorporated to the plans as well. And with the massing and street scape, I believe that I've kind of -- it's in line in character with the street itself, and the replacement trees that I'm proposing are mixture of not both an oak tree, but also more like hedges and privacy screens where there's gaps throughout. So thank you. So in summary, I think the house is a great fit in addition to the street. It's definitely, you know, one of the things that I made compromises. I didn't -- I would have loved to have the ADU much closer and more space, but it was something I was willing to give up to make, to address the neighbor's concern, and then that we're able to keep most of the things that we want in our wish list, and that I did this detailed analysis to to kind of address all these concerns. So, and I hope that these efforts are kind of paid off in terms of the end result. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we will see if there are commissioner clarifying questions, either, yeah, just in case, probably. Clarifying questions either for the applicant or for staff. And after we've done clarifying questions, then we will move into public comment. Commissioner Silverstein?
Yeah, I have a question for city staff regarding the question around heritage trees, tree removal, specifically in regards, as it regards to city ordinance and law. It's, you know, my understanding that the reason why this use permit is before us today is a function of their lot being substandard, but now we're talking about a lot of trees and also in regards to the additional conditions that were added by staff or the recommended conditions regarding trees. Is there any, is that a legal requirement in order for this project to be in compliance with any statement regarding the removal or imposition on trees? Or is that a function of making sure that this project is appealing and appeasing
Thank you for that question. So the additional conditions, so when we evaluate a project, we evaluate the entirety of the project. So how it's going to affect the trees, how it's going to affect the neighbors, how it fits into our, you know, specific or general plans. And so the additional conditions are in order to adequately protect the remainder of the trees that will stay on the site. So the heritage tree removal permit has been conditionally approved. It won't get final approval until or if the project gets approved with the planning commission. So yes, those additional conditions are to protect the trees. And the only reason that the project is before the planning commission is because the lot is substandard.
May I ask a follow-up? Really quickly clarify, I think I understood what you said, but in terms of what was stated around the additional conditions was to protect the trees, is it, am I correct in understanding that there is no legal requirement to protect the trees? It is in the general interest of our community and wanting to protect the trees? Is that correct?
Well, there is a legal requirement to protect the trees. It's part of our heritage tree ordinance. The additional conditions are because the neighbors have expressed concern with the potential impact on their trees. And so we've added these additional conditions to ensure their protection.
Actually, can I ask a follow-up? Because I'm curious. So were these concerns not things that our arborist would have already evaluated? I'm curious about, you know, whether the concerns that we're validating potentially tonight were ones that we should have caught ahead of time, or if that was just, we're not arborists, so we don't know this stuff?
That's a good question. So we have, our city arborist did evaluate this arborist report that was submitted with the plans. An additional arborist report, which I have a copy of, which was submitted by one of the neighbors, by another arborist, is available and was reviewed by the city arborist. She indicated that it did not change her overall evaluation of the project. The additional conditions that we have added in really are to respect the, because we haven't gotten any civil sheets, we're not at that point in the construction process yet. So we're not entirely sure where trenching is going to go, what type of foundation is going to be chosen for specific parts of the project. And so the conditions that we've added really go into it. It's making the applicant come back to us with the final trenching plans, with the final foundation plans, and making sure that the arborist is aware and will review those changes once they come in. So the project itself would be up to you to review and approve. But the additional civil sheets, we, since we haven't gotten those and we don't get those until we actually get a building permit, would still need to be reviewed for compliance with our tree protection measures and the arborist report.
If I could just add to that to maybe provide a little more context for the planning commission as well. So a number of the items that Mr. Hochleitner mentioned were evaluated as part of that arborist report for the project. There are some general requirements, standard tree protection measures, so anytime you're working within the tree protection zone. But based on the additional information that was provided with the neighbor's arborist report, as Mr. Hochleitner mentioned, the city arborist and planning reviewed and felt that it would be beneficial to be more clear about those specific concerns. Regarding the fencing, I think that was something that probably wasn't in that arborist report, because I'm not sure that was identified at the time, that that fence would be removed and looked at that closely. But I think having that information from the neighbor identifying that that tree would be, or the fence would be removed, and the fence does kind of go through the kind of tree, kind of root area, is a beneficial added condition for additional
Do other commissioners have clarifying questions at this time? Commissioner Silverstein?
I was just curious if the applicant, given that these additional conditions were not part of the original agenda, had any quick comment or comments around the additional conditions that were brought before us? If not, then that's fine.
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right. As I see no more clarif-, oh, we, Chair Eric, clarifying question?
Sorry, I have one more. I believe it was in the additional recommendations or conditions for approval was item 2D, which is something like a monthly report. Is that a common condition of approval for other projects in the city? Or is that something novel that city staff is recommending for this project?
So the arborist report recommends that the tree protection measures will be reviewed by the project arborist on a periodic basis. The additional condition is more of a reminder, bringing that to light, that that is something that needs to be taken care of during the whole construction process.
Thank you. I don't think I got a full answer to my question. Is this a common condition of approval for city projects similar to this one? I'm happy to move this question to the discussion portion if it's not an appropriate clarifying question, but I would appreciate an answer to that part of the question.
Sure. So the project arborist is required to do monthly reviews. And whenever there's impactful work planned within a tree's tree protection zone. So yes, monitoring language is part of the arborist report. This is just an additional daylighting, making sure that it's going to be reviewed by the city arborist during the construction process.
Okay, thank you.
I will, I just repeat back so that I can be sure of my own understanding of what you just said. Is it correct that a monthly report is required already, but we're simply adding language to the resolution to reinforce this?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
It is required. We are adding it to the resolution as an additional reminder.
Great. Thank you. Seeing no more clarifying questions, Mr. Pruder, could you please provide a reminder of instructions for participating in public comment and open our public comment period for F1?
Thank you, Chair Schindler and members of the public. At this time, we have public comment for this item. And I've received some comment cards already for this item. So quickly, I'll just go over it again with everyone attending. If you'd like to provide public comment, please provide me with a comment card. And for future reference with other items, please come to the counter, this table for other public comments as well. If anyone is calling or virtually attending, you can press the hand icon with the Zoom interface. And if you're calling by phone, you can press star nine, and we would be able to allow you to speak as well to provide public comment. I don't see any virtual hands or a desire virtually to speak, but we do have the comment cards, so I could begin that process if you'd like.
Please, Mr. Pruder. And as you call names, I will just, please make sure that we can, we can hear you, and the folks who are online can hear you. So if you're speaking here in the chambers, use the microphone, and we'll wave our hands frantically if we can't hear you.
Yes, that's great. And for those speaking, please feel free deliberately move the microphone as needed. The first commenter, you may proceed to the podium at this time and provide public comment. And that would be, I have Beth Benjamin. I'll just be setting up a timer really quickly here on the screen. And once I do that, you'll be able to speak. If you just give me one moment, please.
Mr. Pruder, is the microphone active?
It is now.
Yes, it is.
Sorry, I will let you know. I'm just getting the screen share, sorry.
All right, thank you. Give me a little buffer here. I will talk really quickly to stay in three minutes, so slow me down if you need to. My name, Meghna?
You may, sorry.
Thank you so much. My name is Beth Benjamin, and I live at 777 Hermosa Way. My husband, John, and I submitted written comments on Friday. And we have three very straightforward requests. Our biggest concern and number one priority is reducing any unnecessary impact to the root system of our four large redwood heritage trees running along the property border, especially Tree 32, which under the current proposal would experience the greatest cumulative impact. Each of these trees measures 110 to 130 feet tall with canopies of about 50 feet wide. They are about the largest trees on the street. And each tree sits a mere 10 to 12 feet from our house, which is a modest one-story. Since a redwood tree fell in my parents' house a few years ago, we've consulted several arborists to monitor these trees. The most important thing to understand about redwoods is that they have an expansive and shallow redwood root system, which they rely on to stabilize their enormous height. Simply put, it's the health and the integrity of their root system that makes it possible for these trees to support their massive weight, especially when winds can reach about 50 miles per hour at their top, and soil becomes saturated and soft at their base. We've been told that redwood trees of this size typically have a root system that extends 100 feet or more, well beyond the tree protection zones by Menlo Park. And we have some evidence of this on our property. We recognize that damaging the root system of these trees will be unavoidable, given the construction required for this project, and we accept this. We have no desire to impede the applicant's ability to build what we think is a beautiful house. Our main concern is that the size and scope of this project will inevitably impact about 50% of the tree's root system and disproportionately on one side. The consensus among all the arborists and contractors we've consulted is that the best way to minimize damage to these trees is to reduce the overall impact to any one tree from multiple components of the project, especially within the tree protection zones. It also means keeping utility trenching out. Given this advice, we have concerns about the total impact on Tree 32. We think it's unwise and unnecessary to place a 450-square-foot entertaining pavilion with a concrete foundation, outdoor fireplace, built-in barbecue, et cetera, directly in a TPZ that will already be significantly impacted by the main residence, the pool, the patio, et cetera, especially when there are other options that put it closer to the main residence. Keep it out of the TPZs for all heritage trees, including the neighbors, and minimize the impact of noise and entertaining. Please note, we've never asked to have the ADU removed. We're totally fine with that. For example, there's room at the rear of the home to incorporate a covered entertaining structure. If the applicants do prefer to keep their barbecue away from the main house, the accessory structure could also be placed at the far end of the pool or in numerous other locations. We're also requesting as a condition of approval that all utility trenches be for the house and ADU be required to stay outside of the 10X TPZ. This was the first thing that every arborist we spoke with warned about. It's well-known that PG&E regularly disregards tree roots, tree roots and local ordinances when excavating. And we recently had direct experience with this, with the 96-square-foot house being built directly on the other side of us. 10 seconds more? Thank you. We'd like to point out that there's already, there's also already a fully functioning ADU on the far side of the property with existing gas, water, and electrical hookups. It should be possible to extend the utilities from there, both to the ADU and the entertaining structure. And then just include, just in closing, given the danger and damage to these trees, the damage to these trees could pose not only to our home, but to neighboring properties, we believe it's really important to be vigilant, and our neighbors do too. It seems self-evident to me that a large outdoor kitchen with grill, fireplace, et cetera, should be kept away from the canopy and root zone of 110-foot redwood tree stressed by years of drought. And we note that utility trenching is prohibited in the TPZs according to Menlo Park's own consulting arborist. We think these requests are reasonable, given the options, and we thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, thank you for that comment. We have our next speaker. The card I'm reading is John Durritt. You may now speak when ready, and you'll have three minutes to speak as well. Thank you.
Anytime. Hi, I'm John Durritt. I'm married to Beth. I live at 777 Hermosa as well. Our third and final request is to retain the existing pitasporum hedge that runs along the border as a condition of approval. The pitasporum is on the applicant's property, not ours. We have helped maintain it for several years, helped the neighbors maintain it. It's about 50 feet long, and it's about 20 to 25 feet high. It provides excellent screening between the properties, and it's the only significant planting in the area. There are four reasons we're explicitly requesting this. One, the applicant's proposing a very large two-story house, which is going to be beautiful. But if the hedge is removed, it will allow unimpeded views directly into our backyard, kitchen, bedroom, and shower. Because of the, the second is because of the location of our driveway, there is no place on our property to put screening. The driveway sits right next to the fence line. Third point, because the hedge sits in part beneath the redwood trees, any replacement plants are going to have to be worked around that root structure, and they may or may not provide adequate screening. Additionally, putting plants in, particularly those with 24 to 36-foot bases, is going to upset and further disturb the root system of that redwood tree. It is a big redwood tree. Any damage, further damage to that root structure imperils that tree. Lastly, the applicants have asked for permission to replace an old fence installed years ago. We are in total accord with that. They'll have to do the work from our property because they can't access it from their property. We are fine with that as well. We will incur some expense and inconvenience as a result of that. We are enthusiastic about that if screening is maintained. If the pitasporum is removed, then that opens up a whole different situation for us. And so we ask as a condition of approval that the pitasporum be maintained. In summary, Beth and I have three requests. We request that the 450-square-foot entertaining pavilion be located elsewhere on the property to reduce the impact on the heritage redwood tree number 32. Secondly, we request that PG&E and all other utility trenching be required to stay outside of the 10X heritage tree protection zones, and this must be monitored by the city. PG&E is not very reliable about this. Thirdly, we request that retaining the pitasporum privacy hedge be made an explicit condition of approval, balancing our right to privacy with our new neighbor's desire to build and occupy a beautiful home. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you for that comment as well. And our last public comment card, if anyone else would like to speak, please bring a public comment card over. We have Moira Cullen. You may come up and speak at this time, and you will have three minutes as well. And you begin when you're ready to start. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Schindler and commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to appear in front of you. I am Moira Cullen. I am the property owner at 829 Hermosa Way. And I submitted a letter to this committee, commission, summarizing my concerns dated November 14th, which I believe you all have in your packets. I appear before you in your I appear before you in your role as a policy implementing body and also in your role to review for compliance with city ordinances. In preparation for this meeting, I read the city's Heritage Tree and City Tree Protection specifications for construction, which covers some of the requirements that were laid out for the monthly arborist report, et cetera. My concern, as some of the commissioners have said, you're not arborists. I'm not an arborist. I'm not an architect. I'm not a contractor. I'm a lawyer. I'm trained in duty of care and negligence and our responsibility to others. And as I mentioned in my letter, I have had annual tree work done on my redwood trees and other trees on my property for years, not because there was any requirement, but because of my concern for my own property and for my neighbors. Despite this, several years ago, a very large chunk of one of my redwood trees came down in a winter storm on two of my neighbor's properties on Cotton. Fortunately, their homes were sited towards the street, so there was only damage to their fences and yards, which I, of course, had to pay the bill to repair because it was my redwood tree that fell. This is a particular concern with relation to this project. No arborist has come on my property. I have not received a request for an arborist to come on my property. I only recently understood that a sport court was planned to be sited very close to my property line and, as I mentioned in my letter, to two redwood trees, which have trunk diameters, I would say, seven feet. Again, I'm not an arborist. I know these trees are very large. I took my inch tape and went outside and laid it on the ground to see how many feet the diameter of the tree was. There have been many references in these presentations to detailed notes, arborist reports, arborist analyses, et cetera. No arborist has come on my property. I have not submitted a report. I did not realize that I needed to hire an arborist. Perhaps I'm realizing that now. It is wonderful to hear that the trees at the applicant's property have been thriving for 15 years. That is not the case with the redwood trees at my property. And that was something that I wanted to get across in the letter that I wrote to you. I am concerned about safety. Safety of people, safety of their property, and the health and safety of the trees. So I am asking that the city review the trees in my yard, especially the ones that are six feet away from a sport court, which would involve, I would imagine, grading or moving earth or multiple of the things that are listed in your own ordinances. And I'm asking that you also review the sighting, the size, the location of the trees. Review it for compliance with city ordinances, which I believe is your charter, as we heard at the beginning of the meeting. I appreciate your work on our behalf. I know this is incredibly complex and many competing interests. And I appreciate the opportunity to make comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Pruder, do we have any other requests for public comment at this time?
I'm seeing no additional comment cards and no indication on Zoom of a desire to speak. So having waited for other virtual commenters, we could close public comment if you'd like. Thank you.
I think that let's go ahead then and close public comment on item F1 in our agenda this evening and bring it back to the commission for discussion and ultimately a motion with regard to the use permit. Commissioners have further questions, comments, responses? Commissioner Silverstein?
I have a quick question regarding one of the requests that came up in regards to PG&E trenching. I might have misheard that that was already a requirement that they are legally required to do. Is that a risk of PG&E trenching? And, sorry, PG&E trenching specifically close to the root system of a heritage tree, a redwood? And would a condition as a part of this proposal or this permit affect PG&E in any way? And I mean, as I understand it, we're approving an application for development and I don't know what influence we would have on PG&E as part of this process.
Just for others, members of the public who may be listening online, we appreciate keeping the conversation in the mic.
The current path for the PG&E, that's why, is at the very far corner of the garage. It's a direct 20-foot line. It will not go through any of the TPZ of the redwood tree. That's why I located the meters at the front corner. So that, but in general, PG&E, I've had other properties that PG&E does not, has complete disregard for. They'll top trees, they'll ruin trees. So yes, generally speaking, you as a owner or have to make sure that they're not doing that because they do not regard that, generally speaking.
Commissioner Berusi?
Yeah, I wonder if staff could speak to the arborist report that did seem to take into account the redwoods at 777, but didn't look into redwoods on 8829, especially given the fact that that tree had some issues pretty recently. Is that normal? Like, how?
I think that that may also be a question for the applicant. And so I think, appreciate the question back to the city, but I think a lot of these detailed questions about the project itself should probably go to the applicant first and then city can identify any ordinance or policy-related or other requirements.
Yep, the trees that are on her property are in the arborist report. And so the TPZ and the sport court is located exactly where the existing ADU is. So it's the same footprint. So it's not going to impact, it's going to, it's the same, that's where the ADU is. So the sport court footprint, I kept it to where that house was so it wouldn't have any further development or impact on the oak trees that are. In fact, now those oak trees will be able to see from my property because there won't be an ADU there. So.
Sorry, can I clarify something? So I'm looking back at the tree map now. Is tree 19 on the tree map, which is on page A46 of the staff report? You're not, sorry, that's not, that's not going to help you.
I labeled.
Is that the one that the most recent public commenter is talking about? That's what I'm wondering.
I just know there's three, there's not only oak trees on her property, but on the rear property too, that are in the report. There's three or four that are, there's eight trees that are protected that are not on my property.
Right.
Four of which are the redwood on 777 Hermosa. Two are along the back and two are from.
Okay.
The, yeah, so they, the arborist is required as part of generally best practice is that they look at any trees that have a root zone that's.
Thank you. I just clarifying based on the most recent public comment that those trees, it sounds like those trees have been looked at or assessed in some manner or other.
Thank you for putting the tree map up on the overhead for, sure.
Public comment's closed.
Public comment is closed. Commissioner Berusi, did you get your question addressed? Okay, thank you. Other, Commissioner Sellen?
Thank you. I actually, at my residence, I'm currently working on something that involves a tree protection plan and have been having a project arborist come on site as well as the city arborist. So I just wanted to share a little bit of my experience with this stuff. Yeah, it's a difficult situation because I think with my neighbors, especially, in my case, the trees are either on my property or on the property line. But if it's a tree on someone else's property, I can understand the concern because you have a tree on your property, someone else is doing something on their property. It may impact the roots of your tree. And as the commenter was saying, if something happens with that tree, perhaps you would consider it, you as the owner of the tree would consider it your responsibility, even if potentially, let's say, a limb falls from the tree as a result of roots being cut during construction. Heaven forbid it hurts somebody or falls on your property, but if it falls on a neighbor's property, it's, maybe you would see it as your responsibility. So this is kind of creating a potential worry or headache that feels out of your control. On the other hand, for the applicant, of course, they have their dream home. I really appreciate all the thought and planning that's gone into it, especially all the different configurations you showed. And it is difficult to work around large trees. And some trees, when the home was originally built, were a certain size, but now they're at a much bigger size. And so suddenly a tree that was an issue before may become an issue now. So I'm just trying to recognize the difficult situation everybody's in. I realize it's complicated. I think to Commissioner Berusi's comment that we're not arborists, I think, yeah, there's just sort of competing interests. If we look at the heritage tree ordinance from the city, there is, you know, you can ask for trees to be removed as part of development. You have to show certain things, like, you know, there's no other feasible option. You tried your best. Generally, without commenting on any specific issue that's been raised today, my sense is that the applicant has taken a good amount of care to, you know, avoid certain things. I noticed in the report, there are a couple of maps that were actually really useful, where they show what parts of the new construction will be within the tree protection zone. And then there's notes saying, you know, these will be hand excavated. These will, you know, they're considering a different foundation for certain parts. Again, I understand some of the neighbors are concerned that the tree protection zones may be inaccurate. And that's something that I still don't think we have full clarity on regarding trees on a neighboring property. And since the project arborist, it sounds like maybe did not go and measure those trees since they're on someone else's property. I would be, yeah, I think that's something we should probably discuss is what happens if those tree protection zones are inaccurate. But outside of that, I would say it does seem like a lot of care has been put into working around the trees and trying to mitigate certain impacts. So that's all I have to say for now. Just wanted to provide my perspective on this whole situation.
Commissioner Doe?
Thank you, Chair. And I wanted to ask a follow-up question to Commissioner Berusi's question about 829, the tree on 829. I'm looking at page 25, where there's a red hatch showing where there's work in tree protection zones. And I found that a helpful graphic because it kind of highlights, you know, where part of the home or the AD, the trellis is in a tree protection zone. It says, "New areas of development in tree protection zone where construction requires supervision and obviously special care." And I was just curious why in the sport corner section where this, in the corner of the property where the sport court will be constructed, and this is maybe now a question for the applicant, why there's not a red hatch? I think it's because it's not new development. You just said there's an ADU right there, so it's not new development. But I was just curious, not being experienced, I was just imagining that you will demolish this ADU, construct a sport court while it's not the same as constructing a home, per se. I was wondering if it would provide a measure of comfort to the tree that is most close and to the nearby property owner if that red hatch were there to, maybe that's another area in a tree protection zone, even though it's not technically new development, but that it could have the same measure of care. Not to say that wouldn't be taken anyway, but just to indicate that's another area of work in a tree protection zone. So that's just a question to you. And I see you nodding, so I don't know if there's anything additional that you would like to add to that. Thank you.
That's a good comment. The arborist, the arborist did not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Before you answer, can you re-clarify what page you're looking at?
Sorry, sorry, sheet. It's page 25 in the whole packet, but it's sheet A1.2A, arborist slash tree notes.
We're going to bring it up on the screen here momentarily.
There we go.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, so I'm happy to add those notes as a condition of approval. I think the arborist felt that likely that this will be less impactful than, because the foundation of the ADU is already, or it's called an accessory, accessory structure there is already more.
Sorry, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that the sport court, we don't even know we're going to, what kind of construction it's going to be, but he said that it would be within the same footprint, that it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, great, thank you. I mean, I.
I think if we add a note, that's very fair, yes.
And I appreciate you being willing to add that. If I were the neighboring homeowner concerned about that tree, I'd find that helpful to have that area called out as an area of special concern. So if we could, at the point, when we get to that point, I would appreciate that addition. I just wanted to back up, like Commissioner Sellen, and just offer my appreciation to the neighbors who clearly are very concerned about trees and safety. And you never know which way the tree will fall. So it could really be detrimental to anyone. And I also appreciated the applicant sharing the process, like Commissioner Sellen said, I, from the staff report, I did not realize this was your personal home. So it was very, clearly a very personal process. And you would take, you obviously took a lot of care into designing it. I wanted to turn my comments now to comments from the homeowners at 777. I believe there were three. One of them was that the trenching happens outside the tree protection zones. And I believe this has been talked about through the chair, but Mr. Hoek-Lykenberg, that is one of the additional conditions of approval that you added tonight, correct? That all utility trenching stay outside of the tree protection zones?
That's correct. So we're not limiting it to just the PG&E because they may be, you know, West Bay sanitary or city water might need to trench. And so because there is a requirement that the ADU be separately metered, there could be additional trenching to the ADU. So we want to make sure that we're highlighting the fact that the trenching plan needs to be reviewed and approved by the city arborist as well as the planning division.
Thank you for confirming that. And then I believe the second one was the preserving, the preservation of the existing privacy hedge. I appreciated the perspectives that you showed with the wood fence and proposed planting and also noted the heights of the ADU with the trellis are lower. So it's not a second story, maybe looking into that portion of the yard. I actually had a question about the first bullet point that the homeowners at 777 raised. And that is the consideration of the trellis being moved elsewhere. And you covered many, many things during presentation. I might have missed it. So I was just wondering if you could speak to that question of, and they mentioned a couple of possible places that seems logical.
No, in conversation, that the location of the trellis is close to the house so that we can get from the kitchen to the barbecue. It's near the pool. We also want a veg, you know, a fruit. We wanted a vegetable garden and we want a lawn area and we wanted like fruit trees. And so there's very limited space back there in terms of sun exposure. And where they were asking us to put it was where the sport court would go, which is the opposite corner of the house, as well as putting it where we would have sun. So this is kind of under a naturally shady area that wouldn't naturally get much use or we can grow much in that location. It's accessible from the house. And it's going to be just pavers, so it's not going to be a concrete foundation. We would, I'm working with engineers so we could maybe just have two posts that can limit kind of the structure within the footprint. limit kind of the structure within the footprint of the redwood trees. But I moved it over, and there's just a small corner of it that hits the TPZ zone that, and we're freeing up some of the TPZ zone of that tree as it is with removing where the existing house is. So the net-net was, is not that much different. But I, putting it in, it's not just like you can just plump something else in another part of the house, it's how you want your house to look and how you use the space, how you move from one space to another, and considering the sun and exposure, and how we go from the main house and to the backyard and using the pool, that was really the intent. We wouldn't want to have to walk around the pool to go to the barbecue, essentially.
Great, thank you. That's my comments for now. Thank you, Chair.
If I may, through the chair, I just want to correct something that I said to Commissioner Doe, that trenching is, would not be completely out of the tree protection zone. It is to, the condition is to lessen the impacts of trenching within the tree protection zone.
And that was in 2C, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and just to clarify and add on, it is to have the arborist evaluate the civil plans to ensure that it's outside the tree protection zone, or if it, what's not written is if it's in the tree protection zone, then to submit an addendum to the report minimizing the impact. So identifying additional measures for that specific civil work would be required as part of that addendum. So it's that kind of or, just to clarify, that it's moved outside, no additional arborist report evaluation needed. Within the tree protection zone, would need an additional evaluation to limit those impacts, as Mr. Hoek-Lykenberg mentioned.
Thank you. And could you remind us what the approval process is for those additional conditions, if it turns out that there is trenching inside the tree protection zone?
So when they submit their building permit application, the plans that go along with that will be reviewed by the city arborist, and also with the planning division, so they'll need to have both approvals from both of those reviewers. So city arborist and the planning division will take a look at this before it gets signed off on for a building permit.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Farrak, everybody's like pointing at you, but I can't see, I can't see your microphone on, so, all right. Commissioner Sillin.
Yeah, sorry for that confusion. Commissioner Eric, did you want to speak? You haven't had a turn yet. Vice Chair Eric, okay. Yeah, just to kind of finesse what I was saying earlier, so as the planning commission, we're here to review a use permit, and as we discussed, I think, at the last meeting or the meeting before, we're here to determine whether this project could be, you know, detrimental to the neighborhood, cause harm, et cetera. And so again, we have neighbors here that are concerned about tree health, and we have a property owner that wants, you know, to build a certain project. And I think it's hard for us as commissioners to, this is not a black or white situation where we know, you know, if the sport court goes here, the certain roots will be cut and this tree's going to die. We don't know for sure. And so I think my approach, personally at least, is to focus on mitigation measures and care being taken as much as possible. And so I wanted to ask the applicant to maybe share a little bit about during construction, you know, there's, there's the report, and there's what actually happens. And as commenters have said, you know, if you have a contractor, they're on a deadline, they have another job coming up, they'll say, yes, I read the tree protection report, but then they got to finish the job today, and they start going crazy with a power tool or something like that, and roots can get cut. And once a root gets cut, you know, you can't put it back. So could you maybe share what conversations you've had with your builder, and what, if any additional detail you have, your project arborist will be doing to monitor the work during construction, to make sure that the tree protection plan is being followed?
I am the builder, so I'm the licensed contractor. So in any other project that I have done, it's, it's communication with your contractors, it's being on-site, it's having your arborist there when you're doing that work, when you're doing the trenching work. I mean, all that I can say is that we have the notes that have been amended. I've added sheets that I've never done on any other project, very specific. Actually, I've never seen this kind of detail on any set that I've had, where I've hatched and made specific notes that I've sent to the civil engineer, the structural engineer, and then it would be included in any bid for any of that work. And then the arborist would, I've worked with this arborist, in fact, with David Beckham's father-in-law, who's passed away, but I, he is the one who kept this redwood tree that's at our house, and he'll come by, like, he would come by and just look at it. And so he stops, he will stop, he just came by, actually, because we have an issue with our redwood tree, and the roots going to a neighbor. And so the arborists will stop by on a monthly basis, or you tell them, we're going to be doing this excavation work, can you come by and look at it? I can only stand here and say that's the best, that's the intent, and it's documented, and, and hope that mistakes don't happen, because they do on job sites, right? Where someone does something, even though you've given them direction. There's notes that are on the tree protection fencing, that it's got to stay up. I mean, these are all measures that are part of the construction methods that we're required to do, and do our best faith effort to follow those, and that would be the intent here.
Thank you. And am I understanding correctly that you will be present for most of the work personally?
Right, I oversee, yes, I would oversee it, yes.
Got it. So, and then just a follow-up question on the sport court. I believe you said you weren't sure yet whether there would be any additional foundation work needed. I assume an ADU foundation is plenty good for a sport court, but.
Well, I think that it's going to be demolished, and so the, the land that's going to be left under the footprint of that is where we would place, you know, a sport court. And so it requires maybe six inches of concrete, which is probably the same as the current, but we would assess it, and whether we have money to do that or not, I don't know. So, but that's the plan, that's, that's why I put the footprint there, just to cover up the same footprint as that structure.
Thank you. And then regarding the, sorry, bear with me for one moment. Right, so the, the privacy hedge, I'm still just a little bit confused on that. So in your presentation, you mentioned a new wood fence going up with new hedging. Is that where the pitasporum that the commenter was talking about currently is?
There's currently pitasporum there that's quite tall, but it's also in really bad shape. It's, it's got rope that's holding it up, and if you don't take care of pitasporum, we have some in our current backyard, that they just get mangly over time if they haven't been manicured properly. It's, they're just not, they're, they're not appealing to me. And, and so I understand their concern, but I don't think that's anything that's in the municipal ordinance that I have to keep these pitasporum. And so I'm not required to plant the privacy hedges, but I've put that into the plans as a statement of record that we're going to do that, to address that concern.
And just to confirm, the new fence and privacy hedges that you're talking about would completely cover the area where the pitasporum currently is? Is that correct?
That's right. It's a wood fence is where that pitas, it's along the entire, between our two properties, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. I'm going to take a step back and try and summarize at least where my thinking is. I think we've had some good discussion here, so I think sometimes it's helpful to lay out how I'm thinking about it. I think there seems to be two categories of concern here, which I'll term, the first is preference, and the second is safety. On the preference side, my view is I think the applicant has taken into account lots of considerations, and is in pretty clear compliance with city rules and city ordinances around this stuff. I'll add specifically that, you know, the, the comment about privacy, the main house is set to be quite a distance away from, I believe, adjacent properties, and so I think privacy concerns there are mitigated in that way as well. The reason it's so far away is because of city ordinance that specifies setbacks for that exact reason. The other element of preference I'll note is that the garage in one neighboring property is placed in an area where it's by current city ordinance, not allowed to be. So I think it's sort of hard to say that we want to optimize on that particular thing. So in my mind, the preference concerns are fairly well taken care of. On the safety side, which is where I think we should spend the bulk of our attention, safety is obviously a concern. As other commissioners have expressed, I think this is a difficult situation, in that none of us are arborists. I do think in a case like this, we would lean towards siding with the city arborist, whose job it is to take into account safety. I think in this case, we also have the applicant making specific guarantees. Obviously, we can never know what's going to happen in the future. It's hard to know exactly what the impacts will be, but I think, given the discussion here, the applicant guarantees the additional conditions of approval that are being recommended tonight, in my mind, there is nothing that would suggest that we are being negligent or creating a situation where we're not taking into account a reasonable consideration of safety. So at this point, I'm prepared to, to vote to approve. I will say that the last recommended additional condition of approval, which states the need for monthly reports, I would be in favor of removing that condition, mostly because it seems to me that's not a condition that we put on most projects. There's already a requirement written in somewhere for monthly reports. It doesn't seem to me we have to write it in again, and that seems like overkill and not fair to the applicant, who's already put in a good deal of thought on this project. If other commissioners feel strongly about it, I'll leave it in. But if I were to make a motion, which I'm not right now, I would recommend approving with the added conditions of approval, except for 2D. I'll leave it there for now.
Commissioner Beruzzi. I'm aligned with most of that, although I'm a little more inclined to go with the staff recommendation on the last condition. The other thing that keeps occurring to me is that these are really tall trees, and there are several people who have a really big incentive to retain, to make this, sure those trees are safe. And one of those people is the person who's building her dream home, on which those trees could easily fall. And so I appreciate, I'm impressed with the applicant's willingness to compromise in some areas, and I also understand that there are some areas where the applicant doesn't wish to compromise, and is within her rights not to do so. And I, I appreciate too, that this is an applicant who hasn't just outsourced this entire project to some builder, and is sort of hoping that whatever they say is right. I mean, the applicant seems prepared to supervise every aspect of it, and has clearly thought pretty deeply about it. And so I, you know, I don't think the applicant wants those trees to fail either. And I imagine that the applicant will do everything in her power to prevent that, but I am more comfortable if the city staff have recommended adding that last condition, that that seems like a good thing to do. There are a lot of tall trees. We had a year of atmospheric rivers last year, highlighting it, elevating it, and making sure that it's top of mind, so that it doesn't accidentally get swept under the rug, seems reasonable to me. Commissioner Silverstein.
Glad I waited to speak after some of my colleagues, because it'll save some time, because I am very aligned. I think the way that Vice Chair Eric laid out a framework between safety concerns and preferences regarding the project is how I'm thinking about it as well. I am also, won't to defer to experts in regards of conditions of trees, and can't do anything but take the reports from the city arborist at face value, because I don't have the expertise to negate anything that was explicitly stated. I think one of the questions that was most recently brought up was the condition 2D around explicitly calling out something that is already required. I would go back and prefer to remove that condition, just as a function of setting precedent around continuing to set conditions for things that already occur in our city ordinance. And I don't want that to be something that people need to feel that we always need to do in order to ensure that any given project is going to take into account all of our various rules and regulations, because that's the general assumption that we operate under. And if we can't take that in good faith, then I think we have some other issues. And so my general preference is, if this is a requirement that is going to be required regardless, then it doesn't need to be an additional condition of the application itself.
I'll go, I'll speak very, very quickly, since I've got my mic on. I will not reiterate many of the excellent points that have been made by commissioners and Vice Chair Eric. I am expecting to support the resolution, including the, at least the first two, if not all three of the proposed modifications. Like many of my other fellow commissioners, I am very much inclined to support the professional opinion of the city's arborists. I am very impressed and very, very appreciative of the amount of work that went into coming up with different iterations of this particular plan, of being responsive to both the preferences and the safety concerns that were raised. I think Commissioner Beruzzi made an excellent and eloquent point, just that the applicant wants these trees to be as healthy and as safe as any other stakeholders that are, that are here. So I believe, Commissioner Farrak, you had indicated.
Thank you. You know, I too was wrestling with it in my mind, and had an inclination to want to support it a lot because of the thoughtfulness and, and clear expertise the applicant has. And, and we have not often seen this much, I think because she's an architect, many applicants can't afford to have an architect run 10 different scenarios of where buildings should be placed. So that was pretty impressive. And to, to land on the one that's the best for the trees, I think is testament to what Commissioner Beruzzi was saying, that she, they do care very much, and everyone would want, including all of us, these trees to survive. So, you know, where I'm at is, I was going to hope the staff, could you put up those three new conditions, since we don't have those in our packet? I don't have, I, I would tend, what I appreciate too about, I noticed one of the letters had indicated how through-the-ringer projects used to be many years ago, and I think this would also be considered through-the-ringer. So I hope there's not a lack of process. But I also wanted to comment, I was on the commission many years ago, and I'm back on it now, and I will say that, you know, compliments to staff that this is a great example of them being able to see what we're going to be wrestling with, and propose something that is, you know, thoughtful, and hopefully resolves to the best of anyone's ability, sort of the, you know, the situation. And so, you know, that's sort of where I land, is I'm, I'm prepared to support the project and support any, you know, all three of these new conditions, or not. I'm flexible on that last one, but I guess I would lean towards supporting it in the sense of, we have already had reassurance from the applicant that she would be doing this anyway, so I don't think it's an unnecessary burden placed on her to have an arborist check in on it monthly. So, anyway, that's where I'm at with it, and I just appreciate the. the thoughtfulness of the, of the design, the structure placement. I'm not inclined to require pitasporum stay. I think that the replanting plan that's proposed is very thoughtful. And having it in writing is, I think, the most important thing. That's something that, that I'm dealing with now myself, as, you know, having a, trees that didn't ever materialize between a property and a neighbor. So, yeah.
Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm also generally aligned with what everyone else has said. I'm sort of a little more in the weeds, maybe because of my own project experience. So I just wanted to kind of close out, or attempt to close out, the neighbors' concerns. And I think the only one that's still in my mind that I wanted to, through the chair, ask staff about is the TPZ. So what I've heard the neighbor says, you know, and I don't know if this is true, but assuming it is, the project arborist did not go on their properties to measure the diameter of those tree trunks that are near the property on neighboring parcels. So if it is the case that for one of those trees, the TPZ in the report is incorrect, I mean, obviously, I think the Menlo Park ordinance does not say, you know, the TPZ is whatever the arborist said it was. The TPZ is based on actually the measurement of the tree. So if a neighbor believes that the measurement is incorrect, what avenue do they have through the city, if any, to bring that up? That's a question for staff. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Let me, let me try to answer that. So as mentioned, the, the city has a heritage tree ordinance. It has a requirement for evaluations for development projects, such as we're talking about this evening. And the city does have a city arborist, who is the, the city's reviewer and expert reviewing city arborist reports for projects, doing site visits if necessary, and evaluating that. So in terms of the question, there really isn't like an appeal process for that. In this instance, you know, one of the commissioners this evening did provide their own independent report for their tree evaluation, which our city arborist did look at, which was provided to the city arborist and planning staff, did review, did evaluate, did determine that the findings and the analysis of that report did not change her findings, and through her review of the project arborist report and the project plan. So I think, short answer is, there really isn't an appeal process there. Long answer is, the city does take, you know, heritage trees seriously. We do have an arborist that does evaluate these applications. And so we do a very thorough evaluation to ensure that the concerns that are being raised this evening are reduced to the extent possible in terms of mitigating those potential effects, you know, with the recommended improvement, or recommended measures from the arborist report. So hopefully that kind of helps answer the question, but happy to follow up if needed.
Yeah, that does answer my question. Thank you. And yes, now I recall the staff report mentioning that the city arborist has reviewed the report. Yeah, so taking the framework of safety versus preference, I think, on the safety side, just quickly going over what I heard raised by the concerns, today's comments, as well as the ones we received over email. The covered pavilion, I heard the applicant say is going to be pavers and maybe a couple posts. That really doesn't sound like a huge impact to tree roots. So that seems relatively safe. The pitasporum, I'm in line with Commissioner Farrak, that making a requirement to maintain a plant seems like overreach, and the applicant does have a solution for replacing that. The trenching, and utility trenching, sounds like that's been addressed by the, the new conditions brought by staff today. And then the sport court, we don't know what we don't know, but since it is going where an existing structure currently is, I'm at least personally willing to accept that most likely there will not be much, if any, additional foundation work needed there. So, yeah, past that, like everyone else has said, I think this applicant has taken a lot of care to plan for tree protection. This applicant is a very unique situation. They're going to be, they designed the project, they're going to be monitoring the project and running the construction. And like others have said, I think that's pretty much the best you're going to get, as far as someone that's really focused on making sure things go well. And given all the things the applicant has already committed to, in terms of inspections from the project arborist, excavating by hand in sensitive areas, et cetera, et cetera, I think, to me, it seems like there is a good amount of care being taken around this project. And so really, from here on, it just comes down to, you know, how many mistakes get made, oversights, et cetera. And that's not something that this planning commission has control over. And so I also am in favor of approving the project. I don't have a strong opinion on the redundant, potentially redundant condition being added. And so I will just go ahead and make a motion to, I guess, approve the project with the three new conditions as brought by staff today.
We have a first to approve the resolution for the use permit, inclusive of the three proposed additional conditions from Commissioner Sellen. Do we have any other discussion, questions, seconds, feedback? Commissioner Sellen, or sorry, Commissioner Silverstein?
Really quickly, before we move that motion to a vote, given that there is a relatively trivial disagreement around that third incremental condition, would it be possible, through the chair, to get a, either a straw poll or an understanding on whether or not a majority of commissioners would prefer to keep or remove that third condition? I don't want to vote no on this project as a function of that, and would, obviously would not. And so would prefer to just have that element itself be adjudicated and then move on, and we can let these people go home.
Yeah, I think we can do that. And before I sort of take that, that collection of feedback from commissioners, question to staff with regard to, can you just be very clear for us what the options are if we either leave 2D or remove 2D? What, if anything, that changes with how we proceed in the next few minutes?
Through the chair, can I add something to the question for staff?
Sure.
What does it change for the actual thing that happens? Like, that's what I want to know. What would be different about how the city staff and the contractors and everybody else interact if we add 2D as opposed to not adding 2D? Does it change anything? Or is it just elevating something to make people feel good?
My understanding is no.
Thank you for your question. So the additional condition would not change anything that's not already in place that we have. So this is just to add additional clarity and daylight, the requirement to have this, the arborist review the proposed plans before signing off on the building permit.
To clarify, I think just, we're talking about condition 2D here, which is the infield monitoring. So that would be required, as Mr. Hoekwinder mentioned, regardless. And yes, it provides additional clarity to all members involved in the project, from the contractor, subcontractors, city staff, city arborist, neighbors, that this would be occurring. It, as Mr. Hoekwinder mentioned, does not change the requirements, because it's already embedded in the project arborist's report. It just provides that additional kind of visual clarity for everyone involved in the project.
Can I ask a slightly, potentially obnoxious, forgive me, follow-on question? Is this like elevator inspections, where like, everybody knows it's supposed to happen, and it's somewhere in some, in some boilerplate, but it doesn't actually happen because there aren't enough elevator inspectors? And we, like, can you just give me some peace of mind here? Do you guys actually do this, whether or not it's called out?
We do, correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So you're not the elevator inspectors in this scenario?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions and the visual. So just before we sort of took, take a straw poll across, across the commissioners, I see this as leaning in one of two procedural, into one or two, one, one of two procedural issues. The first is whether or not we accept as proposed by staff, sort of acknowledging the expertise and the thought that they've put into responding to community sensitivity. Or the second is, if we're thinking about sort of forward-looking procedurals, the commissioners who will come after us, and the possibility that future projects might all see this as an example and be inclined to, oh, wait, I want that also included as a condition of approval. I am personally inclined to trust in sort of the language that staff has proposed, and assume that the institutional knowledge of the people and staff and the staff as a whole will prevent it from becoming a recurring issue, where we feel like we need to duplicate things that are already required by putting them in as additional conditions. I'm going to trust that the process works, and I'm going to, I would be in favor of leaving D. And I would be more than well, I would love to have just a quick, Commissioner Sellen, where do you come out?
I would like to ask any commissioner that feels strongly about removing it to make a strong case. I guess I'm having trouble understanding the desire to remove it personally. So I would love to hear one more time what, what the concern is and why we would want to remove a potentially duplicative requirement.
I'm, I'm happy to respond to that. We are really spending too much time on this, and I apologize. My general concern is that, given that this is already a thing we do, I don't want the next project to have someone, someone come to us and ask, please, as a result, can you put a conditional requirement that they have a front door, even though they're going to have a front door, and have another conditional requirement that, you know, elements that are already going to occur. And I'm not thinking, you know, examples that would be potentially gray areas. But generally, I see this as being a redundant function of our already existing city ordinance. That doesn't need to be as part of the application itself, and is rather a part of our building process that already exists.
I promise we'll move on after this. I actually think Commissioner Silverstein said it best the first time he argued for this, which is, we already have a law in place. We shouldn't think it necessary to rewrite things that are already there. We should trust that our systems work. We should trust that our staff are not elevator inspectors. And that if something is already required, that of course we will do it, because our government functions properly. I'm not going to vote no. I think it's a little thing. But I do think we should trust that our systems work and not feel like we need to shine daylight on things that are already there.
Thank you. Seeing no other mics on, I will just remind everybody that we have a motion, a first for a motion from Commissioner Sellen, yes, where to accept the resolution as proposed by staff, inclusive of the three additional conditions. Oh, Commissioner Sellen.
I would just like to quickly say that, yeah, I would like to stick with my original motion. I'm not personally concerned about like a slippery slope of requirements being restated. And I would trust staff on this in terms of wanting to elevate or re-highlight something important. So I would like to stick with my original motion, but open to the straw vote or further discussion. Thank you.
We have a first. I'll second it. We have a second from Commissioner Berusy. Seeing no further, hands raised. Oh, Commissioner Farrak.
I just have a totally separate comment that has nothing to do with this.
She wants to talk about elevators.
Yeah, no, no. But yeah, all due respect to elevator inspectors. No, this is, I just wanted to make a couple of extra comments about, you know, one reason that we're even here wrestling with this is the lot width is about a foot and a half, you know, in width, shy of the 110. The project itself is four feet lower than the building height max, or actually, a little bit more than that, 4.6 or so. And the setbacks are incredible. The, you know, the, the placement of things really added up to being very generous. And so just wanted to point that out as sort of other reasons why I also appreciate this project of, in addition to all that was stated earlier.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised or microphones illuminated at this time, I will go ahead and call a vote on the motion. Commissioner Berusy.
Hi.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellen.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is seven votes in favor, and the resolution passes. Thank you all for being here this evening and for participating. We wish you good luck with your project. There we go. All right, as the, we're just getting everybody reshuffled in terms of their seating positions. I will go ahead and slowly move us into the next item on our agenda, which is F2. F2 is the agenda item that addresses a use permit revision and architectural control revision for 2,800 Sand Hill Road. In F2, at the public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to a use, to a use permit revision and architectural control revision for minor alterations to the north elevation of an existing two-story office building located within the C1C Administrative Professional and Research District Restrictive Zoning District. Alterations include updating the entry doors and main entry portico, which would result in no increase in gross floor area. Mr. Pruder, excuse me. Are there any updates to the staff report at this time?
Good evening, Chair Schindler. Thank you very much. At this time, we and staff have no updates, but I'm available for any questions that you may have. We also have the applicant team here tonight. They will have some initial opening remarks and are also available for any questions. All are in person, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's welcome the applicant to the podium. If you would like to, I believe, make just some verbal comments, is what I've been led to understand. Thank you.
I'm Murphy Perkins and Well, Design Principal. Very excited about this project. We have no comments, other than here to support any questions you may have.
Thank you. Maybe just hold off, hold up there for one moment, because we'll next just do, if there are any clarifying questions that commissioners have, before we move into public comment on this one. Do commissioners have any clarifying questions, either for the applicant or for staff at this time? Commissioner Silverstein.
Can I just get a concise clarification as to why this is coming in before the planning commission, and they can't just do this on their own?
So that's a question to staff.
Yes, thank you for your question, Commissioner Silverstein. Just to clarify, as recited, I just want to break down, this is a use permit revision and an architectural control revision, because we had a use permit and architectural control originally for the site. And as a result of the proposed exterior modifications, the scale of the modifications were determined worthy of architectural control revision as a multi, sorry, non-residential development. And due to the zoning in the C1C zoning district, all uses are conditional uses. This particular office type use was in operation, but with the enhancement of the portico area, it was seen as an increase in gross floor area relative to a previous approval, which dates back a few, about 12 years. And basically, because of that, we have acknowledged that the change in GFA, gross floor area, while not resulting in an increase ultimately, needed to come back as a use permit revision. So this is why we have these two triggers. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually Thank you. I actually have two very brief clarifying questions. I believe these are for the applicant. So the first question is, was the detached exercise room, was that built after the original building, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, yes. One year.
One year after, thank you. And then my next, my final question is, just, would any of the proposed vent shafts or void spaces, utility rooms, or atrium expansions have been done on their own, or are they only happening in order to create space that's exempt from the GFA?
Some of them are happening on their own as a result of air conditioning requirements or planning.
Okay, so yes, some of them would have. Great, thank you. Those are my only two clarifying questions. I'm not seeing any other clarifying questions from commissioners. Thank you. We won't make you stand here during the public comment. Mr. Hochleitner, could you please remind the public of instructions for participating and open us up for a public comment on item F2?
As a reminder, if you're participating online, you may click the hand icon on the lower portion of your screen. If you're calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine to indicate whether you have a comment. If you're in the chambers, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. At the moment, I don't have any comment cards and I don't see any hands raised online.
Okay, as we have no, no comment cards in person and we still have no hands raised online, I will go ahead and close public comment on item F2 and bring the discussion back to the commission for questions, comments, and ultimately a motion. Do commissioners have further questions or items to discuss? Commissioner Farrick.
Thank you. This proposal seems quite straightforward to me. So at the risk of being a little presumptuous, I'd like to make a motion to approve the use permit revision and architectural control revision for minor alterations at an existing two-story office building located at 2,800, 28,000, no, 2,800 Sand Hill Road.
Thank you. We have a first from Commissioner Farrick. I'll second. We have a second from Commissioner Beruzzi. Seeing no other hands raised or microphones illuminated, I will go ahead and call for the vote. Commissioner Beruzzi. Yay. Commissioner Doe. Yes. Vice Chair Eric.
With thanks to the applicant for sitting through the prior presentation, I also vote yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullen.
Aye.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes. That's seven yeses, and the resolution passes. Thank you very much. We wish you good luck with your project. Excellent. So I will then move us into the final item in our public hearing for these, for tonight, which is item F3, which addresses a use permit revision and architectural control revision for 2245 AV Avenue. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to modify the previously approved use permit, an architectural control permit, that allowed a temporary classroom to be located in an existing school, Phillips Brooks, in the PF or Public Facilities zoning district until November 15, 2024. The proposed modifications to the permit would allow the current temporary classroom to remain for an additional three years until November 15, 2027. Mr. Pruder, are there any updates to the staff report at this time?
Thank you again, Chair Schindler. At this time, we have no updates to the staff report, no updates generally. And as a similar reminder to the previous item, we have the applicant team here in person today, specifically comprised of Jordan Kaiser with CAW Architects and two representatives from the school, Olana Khan and Diane Rosenberg. And they would also like to provide brief opening remarks. But if there are any questions for me, please feel free to start with that. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome you. Please, we will, the podium is yours after a long evening.
Good evening. We want to, we'd like to thank Dr. Mr. Matt Pruder and the staff of the Menlo Park Planning Department for reviewing our recent submission. We also want to thank Chair Schindler and the commission for your commitment to civic engagement in Menlo Park. My name is Olana Khan. I'm the Associate Head of School at Phillips Brooks, a private elementary school that's been part of the Menlo Park community since 1978. Joining me this evening is Diane Rosenberg, our interim head of school, and Jordan Kaiser from our architecture firm, CAW. Phillips Brooks leases its five-and-a-half acre campus from the Los Lomitas School District, and in late 2021, we appeared before the planning commission to request permission to add a portable building to our campus. This additional space was needed to accommodate the growing number of students that were enrolled in our after-school program, which serves between 50 to 75 students daily from approximately 305 to 530. Tonight, we're requesting a three-year extension for the use of this portable building. The building is going to continue to be used 100% for our after-school classroom, which is operating under the same conditions as it has for the past three years. This extension will not result in any changes to our conditional use permit or lead to any increase in density, enrollment, parking, staffing, or any operating hours. Prior to the initial project submission in 2021, the school held a neighborhood outreach meeting where there are no concerns that were raised regarding the addition of the portable building. Phillips Brooks School continues to hold quarterly neighborhood outreach meetings, and the issue of the portable building has not been raised once in the past three years, including at our most recent meeting, which was held on October 29th and led by Ms. Rosenberg. Thank you for the time and consideration. We appreciate the opportunity to present this request this evening, and I remain available for any questions or clarifying items. Thank you.
Thank you. While we have you, we'll just ask the commission if they have any clarifying questions for you or potentially for staff at this time. Commissioner Sullen.
Thanks. Quick question for the applicant. I was just curious if you still see this as a temporary structure, or do you foresee yourself having to come back every three years to get this reaproved?
Thank you for the excellent question. At this point, we are applying for it as a temporary continuation of a portable structure. I will say that the demographics of families that are currently enrolling at Phillips Brooks School has shifted, and so we have more and more dual working families that, of course, we want to support. Due to the increasing number of students that are requiring our after-school programs, we, at this point, continue to need dedicated space. That being said, we are currently in the transition of having a new head of school that's going to start and join our community in July 1st of 2025. And one of the things we are going to be looking at is our programmatic needs for the future. We recognize that this was approved during a temporary situation following COVID in 2021, and we hope to do a planning study internally of what our use is going to look like beyond the extension of the next three years.
Thank you.
Commissioner Silverstein.
I guess this is a question for staff, but I don't even know if this is possible within the scope considering what the application is itself, but along the lines of what Commissioner Sullen asked, is there a opportunity to approve this for longer than three years? Or is that a requirement where every three years this would have to come back before the planning commission?
Thank you for your question. We have put forward a three-year proposal, working with the applicant as a request from the applicant team. Generally, the same amount of time as the previous request. We're just, you know, following the requests they've made in the condition of approval, the new condition. But it is something that the planning commission can look at. There's no specific requirement to be three years or every three years or increments of three, but it is something you can entertain, you know, amongst yourselves, thinking about a timeline that works best. We had worked with the applicant previously on this to get three years. Thank you.
Other clarifying questions before we move to public comment?
I should know this, it's probably buried somewhere in the staff report, but I'm mindful of the fact that it might be helpful to align the approval with the lease, the Los Lomitas lease, and I'm wondering, is that, is that aligned with this version, or is there a more helpful, when is the lease up?
Thank you for asking. So we currently have a long-term lease with Los Lomitas School District, and they are in support of this extension of the portable. Our conditional use permit goes till 2032. And so at the recommendation of the commission, if we are looking at our conditional use permit, the year would be 2032. Our lease, I believe our lease has got another 40-plus years, and so I don't think it's prudent for us to ask for a 40-year-plus extension on a portable building. I would request that, and thank you very much for the clarifying question, Commissioner, that if this commission wanted to extend the use of the portable until 2032, that would be open to the applicant.
Thank you. Are there any other clarifying questions before we give public an opportunity to weigh in through public comment? Okay. Thank you. We'll go ahead with public comment, and I think if there are further questions, we may invite you back to the podium. Mr. Hochleitner, could you please remind folks of instructions for participating on item F3 and open us up for public comment, please?
Thank you. As a reminder, if you are participating online, please click your hand icon. If you are phoning in, please click star nine. And if you are in the chambers, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me now. I don't see any comment cards, and I don't have any hands raised.
Thank you. I'm comfortable closing public comment at this time. And then we will bring the discussion back to the commission for questions, thoughts, and ultimately for a motion. Commissioner Beruzzi.
I have a question about the lifespan of a portable classroom. And I just Googled it, and it said 20 to 30 years. How old is the portable classroom we're talking about? Like, is there, could the roof cave in if we, you know, extend it to 2032? Is there like an inspection or a liability or anything like that that would cause the staff to have concerns if we did this thing we're talking about maybe doing?
So let me, let me start. I think most of that question is probably better directed at the applicant for kind of when it was constructed or when it was brought on site, if it was new or not. That's a good question for the applicant. I do want to go back to the timeline. So I understand where the commission's coming from with the desire to look at some flexibility. I do want to also identify while staff evaluate the applicant's proposal, part of the staff support is for the shorter term, there is a benefit to having the first three-year term and the second three-year term where it does allow staff to reassess whether or not it should be extended. So, you know, certainly the commission can have that discussion, and staff's happy to provide more input on the timing. But do want to kind of identify for a moment that part of staff's evaluation did take into account the kind of six-year duration for a temporary structure. When you start to look at a potential seven-year extension to 2032, a year extension from today, you're starting to see a more permanent structure on site. And so there's definitely policy considerations for the planning commission's consideration there. And if the applicant would like to respond to the first part of the question, I'll turn it over to them.
Great, thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so I don't know the exact year the portable was built. I know it was under the 2013 building code. And then for our initial submittal, we had to redo all the engineering for the 2019 building code. So that's as much information as I have, unfortunately.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful. Commissioner Sullen.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to maybe double-check with the applicant. So what I heard from staff was that the applicant requested the three-year term, but then I'm also hearing the applicant say 2032 is good. Could you please clarify your thoughts on this? Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to come back up. So again, the original submittal was for us to renew and extend the original three-year request from Phillips Brooks School. This predated my position in overseeing facilities, and so I can't speak to what the initial duration was. I think, again, it was coming off the end of COVID, and the thought was is that we'd be reassessing how we are using our building spaces. What we found post-COVID, as I said, is that the demographics for the dual working families had increased, and we responded to that need, and I expect we still will respond to that need. The other thing that I will mention is that one question that might come up is why we have five-and-a-half acres and we have beautiful buildings that support our ELC to fifth grade. And one question that might come up would be why we cannot use the current classrooms for supporting our aftercare program. One thing I will say that also has changed is that teachers are routinely staying in their classroom spaces long after our current students are dismissed. They're busy planning and setting up for the next day with provocations and with setting up their spaces with eagerness for the next day. So that is another reason why we believe that having a dedicated space for aftercare is both an immediate need for the next three years, and I could imagine that it may be a longer-term need. That being said, I do respect that another three years would give us adequate time for planning of whether or not we need more campus permanence in terms of having an aftercare building. I do think that with the interim head of school, Diane Rosenberg, who's joined us today, as well as with the new head of school, I can imagine that by extending the lease beyond the next three years would give us some time, not just to do a needs assessment for our dedicated after-school space, but also to really align with our strategic plan and really aligning around what the new long-term head of school is going to want in terms of program development. So I think any additional years beyond the three would certainly be appreciated, and I certainly also respect that 2032 might seem further out. I was just responding to what the CUP is right now and where we will certainly be evaluating what a longer-term CUP is before submitting it to the city and prior to 2032.
Thank you for that. Follow-up question, could you please comment on how time-consuming this renewal process is on your end? Like, when you think about doing this again three years from now, is it like a breeze, or is it a man? Can you comment on that?
Well, thank you, thank you for asking. So I would say that we certainly are willing to invest whatever time we need to make sure that the building is compliant with any codes as well as working with our landlord, LLASD. So there's time involved, not just in making sure that we're aligning with the, being a good neighbor, both with the neighbors and doing any of the neighborhood committee meetings, as well as working with LLASD. I will say that it does come at a cost to the school, because in addition to the lengthy submittal that we work very hard with, with Mr. Pruder, we also have to work with our architecture team and pay our architecture team, as well as working with Mobile Modular, who is the building ultimate landlord that we rent the module building for. So I would estimate that in order to stand before you tonight, we have probably spent collectively 50 hours of my time and other staff members' time within Phillips Brooks School, as well as with the planning commission's time, and then certainly CAW's time. That is an investment that we are happy to make, but that does come at a cost to the school.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And through the chair, I would just like to ask staff one more time to maybe clarify why the recommendation is for three years and what the danger would be of going longer, but potential downside.
We had worked with a similar kind of duration of time, kind of mirroring what was approved three years ago. And in working with the applicant, we had established a sense, I believe, of understanding that three years seemed like an adequate amount of time to work this process out of that three years seemed like an adequate amount of time to work this process out of if there isn't additional extension needed beyond that or if future long-range planning requires different facility needs or activities for the site. And so we had kind of worked together to establish that initial understanding of three years being a suitable, reasonable amount of time. If there is a desire for something longer than that, I think as Mr. Prada had indicated, you know, that is something that you, the planning commissioners, can consider, but at the same time, factoring in the, you know, overall suitability of this building, it seems that a shorter-term kind of check-in along the lines of three years would make, seemingly in staff's view, more sense. But again, it is something that I think you, as a commission, can consider and table as an option to revise.
Um, thank you. Quick follow-up question. So suitability, suitability of the building, if like it's any sort of structural issue that would be something like a code complaint is my understanding. So I believe for, in our case, the suitability is sort of impacts the community as far as the use permit is concerned, the architectural review. And I personally struggle to see a reason for neighbors coming forth, you know, objecting to this from that standpoint within the next few years. But is that, am I understanding that correctly when you say suitability?
I, I thought of it in a more inclusive sense. That is one aspect, but also the suitability of this building vis-à-vis the programs they have, in this case, the after-school program. If it is something that still appropriately serves that need for the school, which I think the school would have to speak to more directly. And so if it does seem the sense that, say, the three-year mark, demographics have changed more so, maybe the building is no longer suitable for the need of the after-school program, that could be a moment of reflection for the school to decide on if they need something different, something larger, or perhaps just an entirely different rethinking of the programs as a whole.
Thank you. I personally would be in favor of giving the applicant more flexibility. At the same time, I'm not entirely sure what that would look like, so I cede my time to other commissioners to chime in. Thank you.
Mr. Pruder, if the resolution were modified and in all of the places where it says three years were substituted six years, would we need to renotice or bring this item back to planning commission?
It's our understanding that the notice included the specific language of three-year term of extension. It referred to the expiry date of November 15th, 2024, a proposed expiration to be extended to November 15th, 2027. And so explicitly, it appears that the language in the notice indicates the precise date and timing. And therefore, if it is the case, we're confirming that now, but that's my initial understanding. It is the case that the notice did include the actual new proposed date of expiry. And so because of that, it may have an implication, like you said, that we might have to renotice the revision and potentially, it's something we'd have to look into some more to, to confirm. But it is possible that we may have to, in some way, revise how we've notified the public on this new, different year or date that's being considered.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. I will just share publicly that I would be opposed to anything that required this to renotice or come back to planning commission in any form. Mr. Pruder, if a follow-up question is just if, if any place where it says three years were modified to say six years in the resolution, are there any additional reviews that city staff would do or like?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. I think we, we would have looked at it differently. You know, I, I'm not here to say, as from staff, that we would be opposed to it. I just really don't want to be on the record this evening saying that. But I do think that, you know, had we been approached with a five-year or six-year or seven-year extension request, not that we would have thought about it necessarily differently, but I do think there would have been a different calculus that went into the recommendation this evening. I think the, the question previously, though, I want to just touch on Mr. Pruder's statement. I, when the initial questions were asked about the changing of the duration or the extension date and expiration date, I think it is really explicit in the notice. And I'd, I'd say for this evening, you know, changing that would probably require us to continue the item, renotice it, come back with a new date. And once again, like I said, I think we'd, we'd want to evaluate that more broadly at staff's level. It doesn't mean that three years from now, staff won't be supportive of another three-year extension or four-year, five-year extension to align with the end of the current use permit. But I think this evening, before the commission is a request for three-year extension, the notice had a defined expiration date. If you were a neighbor and received that and decided that that was acceptable to you, you may have had a different opinion if it was, you know, 2029 or something like that. So I'll just leave it there, but I think that hopefully provides a little more context.
Thank you. I think that's going to be incredibly helpful and, and seeing my fellow commissioners' responses and having a general sense of the sentiment that preceded my question. I'm willing to make a motion to accept the, I'll make the first, to accept the resolution as written, with the timeframe being as stated, three years. Commissioner Doe.
Um, I will second, and before I do that, I just want to say I appreciate Commissioner Beruzzi and Sillin thinking ahead, but I will say maybe in 2027, when it's about to expire again, maybe that's the chance to be like, do we need three years or do we need four or five years, given this discussion? But seeing that it didn't come up this time, I would second the motion to approve as recommended by staff.
Seeing no further hands raised or microphones illuminated, I will go ahead and call the vote. Oh, and before I do, I actually just would like to say thank you on behalf of the community for priding after-school care in support of families who need it, specifically where both parents work. Thank you. And with that, Commissioner Beruzzi. Affirmative. Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes. That's seven votes in favor of the resolution. Congratulations. Thank you very much for being here this evening. We appreciate your, your involvement and your commentary.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Pruder.
All right. That closes up the public hearing component of our agenda this evening. We have as a final section, informational items, section G. Mr. Prada, would anyone from staff wish to provide an update on upcoming meetings, agendas, or any other informational items?
Yes, thank you. So the next meeting will be Monday, December 2nd. So as I think we mentioned two weeks ago, if commissioners know you're not available for that day, given that it's the week after Thanksgiving holiday, please let us know in advance. We are aware of one commissioner.
I will not be here on that, for that meeting.
I wasn't gonna.
That's okay. I'm happy, I'm happy to tell folks and so that folks are aware, I will not be here.
And then we do have three items scheduled for the meeting currently. And then, plus the 2025 planning commission calendar. So that'll be an opportunity to identify any kind of constraints for multiple commissioners where we might have a quorum issue. And then our last meeting of the year, we don't have agenda items noticed yet, so everything's in flux, but that would be December 16th. And that concludes my reports and announcements. We'll identify the January dates on the 2nd.
Thank you. Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Are you able to provide a preview of the items on the December 2nd?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I skipped over that. Yeah, so there's a architectural control for a business on Santa Cruz for some modifications to their kind of rear outdoor patio. There is also a use permit for a single-family home, two-story expansion, so single-story, non-conformity structure going to a second story, bringing the non-conformity in, but it exceeds 50% of the existing floor area, so it needs a use permit. And then a use-based use permit for a, I believe it's a pottery studio at 1919 Manalto Avenue. It's the vacant space in that little shopping center there. And that concludes, thank you for the follow-up question.
Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Silverstein.
This is not a request for right now, but I am curious, just be the lawyer in me, about what the specific notice requirements are and what we can or can't amend based off of what was notified, either for a planning commission meeting or city council, and what discretion, either through city ordinance or through legal guidance, what discretion is given to the decision-making body based on the title of the notice or the agenda item itself? And so if that's, if that exists, that'd be great to send out. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Farrak.
One last question through the chair. Thank you. Is the proposed 2025 calendar that we'll be discussing on the 2nd, will that be released along with the packet or is there? Great.
Yes, great question. It will be released with the packet.
Great. So you all can check your spring break schedules and all that stuff. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further comments, microphones eliminated, I will adjourn this meeting at 9:23 PM. Thank you all for being here this evening.